Talk to Nancy.
A reorganizational meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated 2/2/2025 and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a reorganizational meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025 at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Prozraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county. And, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Wilkoff, Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
I call the meeting to order, and our first item on the agenda is election of the Board Chair. So I'm opening the floor for nominations for Board Chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Commissioner Melner for Board Chair. Second?
You don't have to second the nomination. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The nominations are closed. All in favor of John Melner for Board Chair, say aye.
Melner? Aye.
What did I say?
No, I got distracted by someone's phone out there making noise.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Okay, motion carries. I will hand over to Commissioner Melner.
Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Number two is the election of the Vice Chair. Can I get nominations for Vice Chair?
I would nominate, Kelly, are you serving as Vice Chair right now?
I am.
I would nominate Kelly Van Genhoven, Commissioner Van Genhoven.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Congratulations. Okay, we will move on to 2025 Board Assignments. We'll be going through them. A little bit slower than usual. We'll start off with Personnel Committee. It takes two Commissioners. I have Chair Kelly and Commissioner Johnson. There is one here for Negotiations, Admin, and I got Commissioner Jensen because he's been on it. We, he's still got one that's half done. Budget and Finance. I have Commissioner Jensen as Chair. Commissioner Williams also on that. Public Safety and Judicial, I got Commissioner Williams on Prosecutor, the Sheriff, Probate Court, Circuit Court, District Court, Friend of the Court, and Communications Corrections, is that one still out there? Also on that, on that one.
I'm sorry, can you make, did you just, my name is on all of those? Is that what you just said?
Yes, yes. There's not, there's not like a meeting every month. It's only when it comes up, so.
I was just clarifying whether that's what I heard correctly.
We have a decision to make since we took over on the Delta County Central Dispatch Authority. It said one Commissioner is alternate, and now we're going to have a Commissioner on it all the time, and I picked that one for myself. Building and Zoning Department Commissioner, that would be Commissioner Wilson, Williams. Instruction and Zoning Board of Appeals, Commissioner Jensen. Planning Commission, Commissioner Jensen, and Commissioner Williams. Board of Public Works, I got myself on that. Cooperative Extension Service, Commissioner Jensen. County Road Commission, I got myself. Airport Board, Commissioner Jensen and Commissioner Kelly. QPAD Executive Committee, I have myself. QPAD Member-at-Large, which meets every quarter, I got Commissioner Williams. Conservation District Board Liaison, I have Commissioner Jensen and Alternate Commissioner Williams. Building and Grounds Committee, I got Chair Johnson and myself. Delta Solid Waste Management Authority, there is one Commissioner, one Commissioner Alternate. The Commissioner would be Commissioner Kelly, the Alternate would be Commissioner Johnson. MAC Courtman's Comp Board, I have myself. Building Authority, I got Commissioner Jensen. Renaissance Zone, Commissioner Williams. UP State Fair Authority, Commissioner Jensen. Brownfield Authority, Commissioner Williams. Superior Trade Zone, Commissioner Kelly. Jail Committee Administrators, Sheriff, Prosecutor, and two Commissioners, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Williams. Northwoods Rail, one Commissioner, that's Commissioner Kelly. Upcap, UP Energy Works, we never had anything on that one. Okay, MAC, various committees. Each Commissioner has the opportunity to serve on, I believe there are six committees. And I think Commissioner Kelly has been on, you signed up?
Signed up, yeah.
Did you?
I have not signed up, no.
Oh, so that's, that's open? I don't know which ones are open yet.
I think the deadline to apply is January 12th.
Yes.
And you can just go on the website for that.
Just go right on the website?
Yep, and if anybody wants to apply for one of the committees, username and password, they just need to, I can pass it out to everybody.
Department of Human Services Board, and that would be Pinecrest, I got Commissioner Johnson. County Board of Health, I have myself and Commissioner Johnson. UP Michigan Works, Elected Official would be Commissioner Johnson and Alternate of Williams. CAA HRA, I have myself and an Alternative Kelly. UP Commission for Area Process, I don't, I think that's a dead one, wasn't it?
That's Upcap?
Yeah, it's the Upcap one for each.
It has on here, no longer exists on, yeah, on your 220, 24.
Let's see, the Alternative Education Board, that one no longer exists. Little Bay, they're not Council and Government, that's two Commissioners. I have myself and Commissioner Kelly. That one, if I've talked to Jim from Escanaba, and he is supposed to try to start this up again. It's a pretty interesting, where there's like 17, there's Township Association people there, there's Commissioners, there's Mayors, there's, so, everybody around. Pathways Authority Board, I have myself on that one. North Care, Network System, Substance Use Disorder Policy Board, and that one is Commissioner Johnson. Delta County Local Planning Body Homeless Coalition is Commissioner Johnson. Opioid Task Force, I have Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Kelly. IT is, I got Chair Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Johnson. And let's see, they give me some. The Central Upper Peninsula Material Management Planning Committee, I have Commissioner Kelly. And I think that is it. No.
Yeah, Park and Rec.
Oh, did we, we did Park and Rec, please?
I did. Yep.
Oh, can you say that again? Because I don't have it either.
I did get it somewhere. I think I passed it out.
It was?
Yeah, Parks and Rec, Commissioner Kelly.
There should be two.
Okay, now. I.
Two for Parks and Rec.
I have one down. Parks and Rec, one Commissioner.
Chair, in the past, you had Commissioner Van Genhoven and Commissioner Jensen.
Has it changed?
There is two then, then I'll put, Commissioner, leave it the same, Commissioner Jensen, Commissioner Kelly. But this one only has one on it, so.
I think that's the change with the public act.
Okay. You know, I, when I give these out, I give them out to the best of my knowledge of how things, people, what I think is going to do the best job. And if somebody wants to change with another Commissioner, I guess at this time, we will discuss if somebody wants to change.
Okay.
And it's up to the Commissioner that has the job if he wants it, or wants to let it go, or change.
I have a couple that I would like to ask about. I would really like to serve as the Liaison for the Road Commission. And I know, John, you've served as the Liaison, Liaison for quite a while. Is that right?
Yes, I've been on the Liaison for, I believe, six, six years, and I was a Road Commission for three.
Okay. Yeah, I just would, would, you know, kindly request that I give, be given the opportunity to, to serve as the Liaison for this next, at least the next year, so that I could, I can better serve, better be a part of the group to address some of the concerns that I have from my constituents. During my campaign, I heard from quite a few people, and, you know, they just really would like me to be serving on the Road Commission. So I just would kindly request that, that I be given that opportunity for this next year.
Well, at this time, I just soon stay on it.
Okay.
I have a que, are you, is that the only one?
No, but that's okay, you can go ahead.
Okay. For the negotiations, I had never heard of that being a Board or a Committee before. It would be my recommendation that it be the Chair of Finance and the Chair of Personnel along with the Administrator. Is there, is there, is there, I mean, I've never heard of the Negotiations Committee, I've never heard of the, of the rules. Okay.
Oh.
Okay. Is that something that's a possibility?
Previously, there was two. Previously, if you look back historically, there was two.
So it would be the Chair of Personnel, the Chair of Finance, and then the Administrator? That would be my recommendation.
I have no problem with one from Finance, one from Personnel, to be on that.
Are you okay with it being the Chair, the Chairperson?
Yes, yes, I would be fine with that.
Okay.
So on the Negotiation Committee, it will be Commissioner Jensen from Finance and Commissioner Kelly from Personnel.
Hold on, I need to find it. Oh, here, it's, because it's not on my list at all. So it's going to be, who again?
Negotiation Committee will be the Administrator, Chair of Finance, which will be Johnson, and Chair of Personnel, which would be myself.
Okay. All right.
And then I just have one more, just like I did last time. I would just like to respectfully ask if I could be given the opportunity to be the Liaison to the Conservation District.
You can, I was actually looking at, and we don't, in the past, when we did that, it was because they also did parks, and we had an appropriation to them. Without having an appropriation, do we actually need to have the position at this time?
Well, you have a Liaison to a whole bunch of, and they, you, we have thousands of acres of land in Conservation District programs right now, so it seems like we should still have a Liaison.
I was just asking, because you're the current Liaison, and I was wondering if I would be able to take that for this year?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I, I'd like to, Commissioner Jensen brings up a good point. There's lots of people that have land in the Conservation District, yet they're not represented as a Liaison. I know we do have a big chunk, but it kind of makes sense to me that the parks are no longer there. So there's, we really don't have a dog in that fight. As a previous Liaison, pretty much the meetings would go as the parks, and then we would give our input, and then after that, it was pretty much, they ran the meeting on their own. So it was, it almost seemed like you, you really didn't need to be there.
So why do we have a Liaison to, like, the Road Commission?
That's a good question. Maybe we don't need one.
Yeah, I mean, it, they're exactly the same scenario.
The counter argument is.
No, they're not the same. So the Road Commission is a component unit of Delta County. So we have a different relationship than we do as the Conservation District.
Okay.
Just for that one example.
And you, so if, the county has all of their parklands? All their parklands are in Conservation District programs?
Sure, sure. But so does any other property owner that has all of their property with Conservation District programs.
But those are private people, right?
Well, sure, but, I mean, just because we have, we use a program, doesn't mean we need to have a Liaison for that program. It just, I mean, I don't really have an example of why we don't, but I don't really need to be at every single meeting in Delta County just to be a Liaison for something that is just something we participate in.
I would like the opportunity to, to serve as the Liaison to the Conservation District. Unless it comes forward on an agenda where we no longer want to have a partnership or a Liaison, or if they don't request, you know, having no longer interest in having us be there, I, I would like the opportunity.
I have a pretty full calendar, I'm, I'm actually open to that.
So, so we'll switch?
Yeah, I will be the Liaison, if that's okay with Matt. Okay, thank you.
That's switched.
I don't think so.
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, there was. It was, it was Jensen, and then Melner was the Alternate, so, I mean, do you want to just be the Alternate, Matt? You can be my backup, you can be the backup, yeah, okay.
So are you talking about the Conservation District still?
Yeah.
So originally, it was, it was Jensen and Williams. So now it's going to be Kelly and Jensen?
Do you want it, or do you want it?
Nope, you're good. Nope, he already put.
I'm just, I just want to get this right, so.
He'd already had you as the Alternate, and I'm good with.
Oh, yeah, I see, no, I apologize.
Okay.
So then, one other thing is, I've noticed, and this has been something we've had going on for a while, is we give a decent amount of money to the animal shelter. We don't have Board representation on that animal shelter.
Right.
So should we be looking for that representation as well? And ask for a seat on that Board? I'd like to see that move forward.
Yeah.
I, I definitely agree, yeah.
It's actually in our Rules of Procedure as well, so.
Well, we have Animal Control, but Animal Control and Animal Shelter are two different things.
Correct, yeah.
That's all I have.
I have a couple, I have a couple of other things I wanted to discuss. One, I want to be very transparent about the Board that is, that is one of our Boards that our Commissioners serve on, and there's extra compensation to serve on this Board. So I just want to ask whether or not any of the Boards that are listed that we just were assigned to besides the Workers' Compensation Board, is there any other Boards where you get extra compensation? Or is that the only one?
Do you mean such as perks, or such as, yeah, but I know that, but such as perks like financial, or such as perks like free tickets, free different things?
I'm new to this, I didn't know we get perks like this.
There are, depends on your Board, depends on the perks you get for attending different things.
Okay, I'm talking just financial at this point, like, you're, you're getting extra payment.
Right, but, I mean, it does all boil down to financial, because if you're going to pay for a ticket or get a free ticket, it's a financial benefit.
But I'm not going to go and buy the ticket. So there's not, if I'm going to get a stipend, I'm getting another, I'm getting an extra $6,000 a year.
Sure, sure.
That needs to be known. People need to know that.
Sure.
And if there are other committees on here, I want to know what other financial incentives there are in any of these committees. So I'm asking, are there any others besides that one?
Nope, not that I know of.
Okay, so the Workers' Compensation Board does include extra compensation for the person who serves on it, it's an additional $6,000 a year. So I would suggest, I hope, moving forward, that, you know, there are multiple Board members who, who get an opportunity to serve on that Board if the compensation is something that they're looking for, if extra compensation is, is part of what they need.
So, in the past, if I may share, in the past, it's been the Board Chair that has had it. In fact, it's been that way for, I want to say, 15 years, 16 years?
But it's not required.
It's not required. However, there have been, there's been one exception that I'm aware of, where it's been just a Member-at-Large.
Yeah.
And so, I would, I'm comfortable with the Board Chair having it.
Well, it's not statutory, it doesn't have to be the Board Chair, and the Board Chair is compensated additionally for being Board Chair.
Sure.
So if there were someone on the Commission who had workers' compensation experience, was actually a better fit for the Committee, they ought to be considered. And I think that we just need to be clear about what this Board is, and that there's extra compensation with it. I just want to be transparent about that. And then lastly, I would like an opportunity to serve on the Parks Commission. I had a meeting with Steve Wary the, the other day, we had a great conversation about the parks, and, and I have a lot of experience with the parks, both the Obie Fuller Park, Pioneer Park, and the Cornell Forest. I have my constituents in Ford River Township and Bark River Township, who are very connected and concerned about Obie Fuller Park, and so I would really like the opportunity to serve on that Board if, or in that Commission, if I could switch something with someone relative to that.
Currently, that Board is Commissioner Jensen and myself, and I serve as the Recording Secretary on that Board, so I wouldn't want to give that, I personally would not want to give that one up.
I actually have several items. One of them's working through the state to be able to do the road portion right now, as well as sitting in the Subcommittee for the items coming together that will go forward to Dottie for our five-year plan.
So the five-year plan is, we're making sure, that's another thing, that was a prom, a campaign promise that I made to my constituents, that that five-year plan would be complete, and that it would, you know, that it would be a priority, and that, you know, there would be lots of public input into that process. So that's, that's going to happen.
That's, yep, that's, sorry, I was going to say, that's still in, in process. In fact, that will come out later on one of the Finance Committee item ones that dealt with a grant, and then if that doesn't fall through, how that's being funded, through QPAD for that. And then, the time is actually back planned from when that date has to be in.
Would you be willing to take on the Recording Secretary role?
I absolutely would.
I'll give it to Commissioner Williams.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll ask mine. I would like to sit on the Landfill Board if I could. I sat there for 12 years previously, and I know quite a bit of history with it, so if I could, I would really appreciate it.
Solid Ways?
Yep.
No, thank you.
All right, all right.
Is there any other requests?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just one second, just, I want to make sure. So in our, in our Rules of Procedure, let's see. There were some things, okay, so I think we probably are just going to have to look at this at another time. Yeah, it's okay, I'll, I'll wait on it, but there was like this Elections Commission, which I felt was maybe something that ought to have an assignment, but.
That's statutory, and that is made up of the Probate Court Judge, the Clerk, and the Treasurer.
Okay, so we're, we're good there.
You're good there.
Okay, perfect. I think I'm okay, yeah.
Everybody okay? Okay. We will move on to the adoption of the Rules and Procedures.
Can we ratify the appointments for the Chair, or for the? Assignments?
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the 2025 Board Assignments.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Number four, adoption of the Rules and Procedures.
I have a fundamental question about this real quick before we get started. Do we have to give notice, a 14-day notice to, ooh, do we have to give a 14-day notice in order to amend the Rules of Procedure?
That's in there?
So we can't amend them tonight? We'd have to make, make suggestions for amendments and then come back to it in 14 days, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I need a motion to adopt.
Nope.
No?
Yeah, I have, yeah, so I have changes, proposed amendments, and I don't know how we, I, I need a little bit of guidance here, because I'm not exactly sure. If we can't make any amendments tonight, am I proposing those amendments? And then we come back in two weeks and we adopt or not adopt them? Is that correct? Okay. So I have, what I will do is, I have lots of proposed amendments, but I'm just going to focus on two of them tonight, because they, I feel, are more important than sort of the grammatical stuff and, you know, formatting and so forth. So the two that I would like to discuss are in Section 4.51, which is the Board Departments and Responsibilities. And I had actually handed out a spreadsheet that has all of the Commissions, Departments, Committees listed in the first column, and then I have in the second column, the Rules of Procedure, which is this book here that we're looking at and talking about, and whether or not the Rules and Procedures align with our worksheet that we just worked on, our budget worksheet, or, I mean, our Committee's Assignment Worksheet. And there's some discrepancy. And so what I would suggest is that we all look at this spreadsheet, and then maybe go through it and see if, maybe some of the names might be inconsistent in the Rules of Procedure, or if some of the Committees, Commissions, Departments are, no longer exist that are in the Rules of Procedure. So just trying to clean that up. So that's in Section 4.51. There's that one, and. And I think the spreadsheet is enough to, you know, sort of guide you along to what I found, what I saw. And then the second is really pretty basic, and that's on page, well, I don't know what the page number is, because there's no page numbers on here, but it's 5.11.
Fifteen.
And that's the regular order. And I handed out a sheet also for that, which is, the regular order that's in our rules of procedure does not align with our agenda, the way that we order our agenda. And so I'm just asking to align those, those two things. And so I handed out a sheet of paper, which looks like this. It says, "Propose change to 5.11 regular order." And it literally just is the order of our agenda. So if we could, if we could align that so that they match. And I think that's it for now. The rest, we can talk about at a later date.
Okay. Actually, I have a question. Is that for Nancy? Is this part statutory as far as adoption of the rules and procedures? Is that required to be done tonight?
I know in the past, we, you know, we've delayed it for the two weeks.
Okay.
So, and so we go by the current ones until we adopt the new ones.
Okay.
Yeah, and these aren't, these aren't any, they're not holding, you know, they're not changing the rules of procedure. It's just cleaning it up.
Yep.
So.
So do we?
So, so we could adopt the current ones coming two weeks from now, if you want to do that. So if you have rules in place and make the amendments in two weeks.
Move adoption.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay. We will move on to approval of the minutes in, of the previous meetings on county board, minutes 12, 17, 2024, and 1230 of 2024.
Move approval?
I need approval.
I'll support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. There was no committee at all. We move down to approval. I need a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Support.
I think there's some changes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have the two that were sent out, yeah.
There was one request to remove Agenda Item Number Nine, appointments to Veterans Affairs Committee, and add a closed session for the collective bargaining agreement with Secret Court.
Can we put that closed session, or after public comment, instead of before? If it pleases the board.
Commissioner Williams, do you want to amend your?
Yes, please, yeah.
Support.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Motion pass. We have an agenda. Presentation of written communications received and forwarded. It is in our screen.
Move to place on file.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Number eight, reports of standing statutory in special meetings and others. There was none. Public comment on agenda items. Public comment on agenda items. See a nun?
Uh huh.
Okay. Yeah. See a nun will.
I'm just gonna get $20 for each device, right?
We will move on to committee reports. Administrator report.
The Escanara Area Junior Hockey Association will be hosting two weekends of the Maha Playoffs. The first weekend will be January 17th and eighth through the 18th, and we'll have nine teams. The second weekend will be February 7th through the 9th, and we'll have eight teams. This is just notification for those that have to plan. We'll be having a large amount of, I'm sorry, traffic and individuals in our community. And we also came to a tentative agreement, which you'll see, that has just been added to the agenda tonight for the last collective bargaining contract of 2024. We will have two more in 2025 to address. And just some general administrative updates. We're currently finalizing the calendar year personnel and independent contractor reports. We are assisting the airport department with accounts payable, bank reconciliation, sales tax reporting, and receipt processing due to the resignation of our assistant airport manager. We're preparing all of our year-end grant reporting and our first quarter grant reporting. Also, I mentioned in our previous meeting, well, not the special meeting, but the regular meeting, the alternative funding for trial court forums, we're still working on that. And this is in conjunction with the other trial courts in the county clerk's office. The Finance Committee recommended a contract for the animal shelter, and it's pending the shelter's board's approval. They have not met yet. And it actually addresses one of Commissioner Johnson's items that he had noted during the appointments of asking for a seat at their board. Both the airport manager and the assistant manager positions are open and posted, and I just wanted to let everybody know, they can go on our website at deltacountymi.gov/appointment to apply. We have received one application for the airport assistant manager position so far. The open enrollment for healthcare coverage of 2025 has been completed, and the county cost education plan for 2024 has been completed. And then also later on, we have an item regarding the RFP for the executive search, and we did not receive any bids. But I did receive an individual that was, had, gave us four options, and I would, will like the Finance Committee to review that at our next meeting.
Can I get a motion to put Administrator's report on file?
So moved.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, we'll move on to, we had a building and grounds meeting. It was Commissioner Vu and myself, Administrator Young. There was two things on new business. One was the maintenance of the health department renovations. They are gonna take two exam rooms and remodel them, and they're paying for the whole thing themselves, so the county won't have to pay anything for that. The second one was central dispatch relocation. And we're looking for a subcommittee?
No, we're not looking.
Nope.
We just approved a subcommittee.
Oh, we approved the subcommittee. So that was about it. On the health department renovation, that is on the schedule coming up on our agenda. I believe it is number seventeen. So we'll put the motion on that. I need a motion to put Building and Grounds Committee minutes of 12, 16, 24 on file.
I'll make the motion to put the minutes on file.
Can I get support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number three, Personnel Committee minutes of 12, 20, 24.
For personnel?
Yeah, for personnel.
Yep, so these, this was just an overview of what we had already discussed at our special joint meeting between the airport board and, and the county commission, and then also what we decided at our special meeting on the 30th. So they were just the job descriptions of the airport assistant manager and manager.
A motion to put that, or the Personnel Committee on file.
So moved.
Can I get support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Number four, Finance Committee minutes of 12, 20, 24.
So one of the items will actually, that'll actually be addressed. I think that's also in number seventeen with the renovations here in this building. That's for a full-time custodial one position. There was ongoing talks with Michigan Works as well that were needed, as well with the Health Department, since they will also be co-funding that position. So there was no action taken on that. The other two, for the airport manager and assistant airport manager salaries, that was determined the range that was approved in the special meeting that we had just prior to the end of the year. And then, where was the other one here? And there was one other item requested, and that was by Park and Recs. And that has to deal with that very grant we were talking about, 2QPAD. And at prior to our, at our last Park and Rec meeting, that had not been put in. I had been in contact with our Park and Rec manager over Christmas break, that he had reached out and that has been put in. But this is the contingency, in the event that we are not awarded that grant, that money will be provided out of that budget to cover the five-year rec plan.
Okay.
And then the animal shelter portion, which Commissioner Johnson asked about, that was also there already.
Can I get a motion to put Finance Committee minutes on file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number five, departmental updates. Any departmental updates? Steve?
We have an update for you tonight, but I just want to congratulate all five of yous for a four-year term. You too, Nancy. And to let you know that if you have any questions concerning the parks, any of the projects we got going moving forward, I've got a policy. If you email me, I will get back to you. And I'm looking forward to a good 2025 and to really move the parks forward. So again, congratulations and a good new year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve. Okay, general orders of business. A unfinished business or none? So we move on to new business. Number one, payment of the bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following as the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer for the payments for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, $347,998.27. Commissioner expenses of $951.61.
Motion to pay your bills?
I'll support.
Can I get a roll call?
Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vanckenholden?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
Okay. Bills are paid. And we move on to number two. Set the 2025 meeting dates. Anybody have any problem with the meeting dates?
I'll make a motion, we accept the 2025 meeting dates as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. Ashley, was there a meeting in April that you said you would have a problem because of you being out of town?
Yes, it would be the first meeting of April. Because that is, so it's April 1st.
Okay.
I'll be out of town February 4th, I believe, the first meeting in February as well. We have a wedding to attend that's been scheduled for a while.
Which I guess, which is gonna be the best way to move that meeting, so we can set that now? Is it a couple of days one way or the other?
For me, I'm gone the first week of February.
So we'd have to.
Unfortunately, it's the whole week. Same with you and April?
Same with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
April does have five Tuesdays in that month. So the 15th is the third, we could do, to keep every other. Then it would back up right into, um, days.
April 8th?
Or April 8th.
April 8th works.
Okay. And hopefully, we're slow enough, we can just cancel it anyway.
It's always possible.
So we are switching the February 4th meeting?
No, the April 1st. April 1st.
April 1st, oh, okay.
To the 8th.
April 1 to April 8.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and, and we'll address the February date. So the February 4th, how many Tuesdays are there in February?
There are four Tuesdays in February. Unfortunately, it's unlikely, well, no, I would be back in time on the 11th. Which would be the next Tuesday.
I'm just kinda looking where March is.
Or I could miss that meeting.
I mean, you do get excused.
Yeah, we would excuse you.
Yeah. I guess my question for Administrator, if we push that back, or if we were to alleviate that meeting, where we only had the one on the 18th end, how does that, how would that affect for our bills being paid? Since that's usually the one at the beginning of the month. That would be my largest concern with alleviating that potentially.
And I do have to say that typically, we don't cancel meetings because one commissioner is gone.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Well, and yeah, I mean, we just need a quorum. Life goes on.
And I'm fine with missing it, it's just I will be gone for that meeting, so.
Are we looking at, are we just seeing the date or keeping it the same?
I, I was just saying, I'm available on the 11th, if you want to move it. But if you don't want to move it, then I will just miss that meeting. As long as everybody else can be here and you have a quorum, then you'd be fine.
Yep.
Because I'll be gone November 18th, I'll be out of the country, but I'm still, you know, I'm not gonna.
Because we'd have to change the whole schedule.
Yeah.
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 Well, let's just keep it as is.
Yeah. Okay, so just with the.
Just April.
Okay.
And Administrator Young, you're, you're out of phone reach for that April meeting, right?
Um, no, I can be available via phone.
So if we, even if we needed to, we, I mean, she could be here by phone and just.
Yes.
So we.
Because she, she's not.
She doesn't have to vote, so.
Right, oh, exactly, so life goes on.
Right.
So we could just keep it all the same.
Yeah. So after all that.
Let's keep it the same.
Yeah, the original motion and second then are still on the floor.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll leave it all the same? The motion is to leave it the same?
No, the motion is to adopt it as.
As is.
Yep, as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, number three, the 2024 remontation completion report. Terry?
Give a little summary of what's accomplished in 2024. We set 105 monuments across the county at an average cost of $911 apiece. That leaves us with 534 monuments left to set in the county. The majority of these monuments are in the Forest Service lands, and the Forest Service surveyors are monumenting, although not at the speed that we were monumenting in math. So we're not ending the program, but in 2025 will be our last monumenting procedure program. So we're gonna switch to what's called maintenance in 2026, which is where we revisit all of the older monuments that were established at the beginning of the program, and then verify that they're still in, and change things if they've been destroyed or they need additional. and then verify that they're still in, and then change things if they've been destroyed or they need additional witnesses or whatever. So twenty twenty-five is gonna be our last monument year. Stepping ahead a little bit, guys and girls, because I'm the next contractor, or next item on your list, my twenty-five, twenty twenty-five contract. But I'm just letting you know that we've already scheduled ninety-seven monuments for next year. So that's gonna get us well into the low four hundreds for the county purpose lots. And, uh, the Forest Service did bring in twenty monuments this year. So, you know, again, we're doing a hundred and five, or a hundred and ten, and we're doing twenty. So we'll get there eventually, but, and again, the majority of ones that are left are in the Forest Service, and a lot of them are basically meaningless. I mean, they own all the land they're on, and so what's the monument for? That's just a little update of where we're at and where we're headed, as long as you approve me in the next, next part of the meeting here, I'll be ready to start monumenting.
Can I get any motion to accept that report?
Motion to place on file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number four is the twenty twenty-five contract with Davis-Winnick surveyors.
Hey, I didn't think I'd ever get to this point where, where this would be almost done. Because twenty-four years ago, there were, it just seemed like for-
Right, well, there's four thousand two hundred and ninety-six monuments we set over the course of the year.
Wow.
And just as a historical point, those were originally set in the eighteen forties by rod and chains.
Yeah, yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah. The fact they were done with rod and chain yet was, is still impressive.
Yes, absolutely.
I think most of the accuracy's been pretty close on those two.
Okay.
I would move that we accept the twenty twenty-five contract for Davis-Winnick surveyors to continue the re-monumentation.
I'll support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number five, resignation of Q sprits, request to fill a communication position.
Corrections.
Corrections, I'm sorry.
That's right.
I need a motion to, for his resignation.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Q sprits from correction, and to also send them a letter, please.
And to fill?
And to fill. Thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Resignation of C. Leduce, request for lump sum payout and to fill dispatch position. Motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
Yeah, we're gonna send, send a thank you.
Send a thank you.
Send a thank you. Uh, number seven, resignation of R. Randstadler, request for lump sum payout to fill, and to fill airport position, manager position. I need a motion?
Uh, I just have one comment on this one. I did read it, and it, there was a caveat in there about if he were to accept a position elsewhere sooner, that we could be impacted by that. So just so we're all aware that there could be a bigger impact, potentially. Okay.
And I would like to request a transitional period. So typically, under this item, we only fill it once it's vacant. I would like to have a buffer in there in case if we do have an applicant able to come in, so we can bring him on prior to-
So they would shadow with him?
Right.
Yeah.
Do you want that in two separate motions, then?
Um, I, how would you refer it? I don't think- We can make it a separate motion.
I'll make the motion, we accept the resignation of R. Randstadler, and, oh, let me think about how to do, and if given the opportunity to shadow with a filling of the new position, that, that would be done. I don't even know how to say that, but you get the gist of it.
Support.
Okay, um, lump sum payout and-
Yeah, fill.
And to fill, yeah.
Okay.
With the allowance of a buffer.
Thank you, that's much better stated.
And to send a letter of appreciation.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a group effort right there.
We got a motion, we got a support. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who supported it?
Anybody oppose? Pass. Number eight is the Airport Manager Search Service bid.
So we did not receive any bids. However, like I had stated earlier, we did receive a proposal by a single individual, it had four options. And it discussed becoming our Airport Manager and a economic developer, along with they would be performing the campaign search for a long-term Airport Manager. There was options of two years, and then less years than that, I think it was like one. And anyways, so I was gonna bring it forward in our next meeting at the Finance Committee, which I believe will still maintain our regular schedule that we're having, so it'll be this Thursday.
Do we need a motion on that, or is that informational? Okay. Uh, number nine has been crossed off.
Yeah, do we need to-
We need to move to table.
Or move it to the next meeting?
No, we amended the agenda.
Did we amend it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Number ten, Medical Examiner Contract Amendment.
Our medical, our current medical examiner approached me, and this is the individual that I was going to extend the contract for another year with, asked for a modification of the language, and you'll see the change there, the statement that says, under Section six A, currently mandates the creation of an annual report to be delivered to the county health officer by July first of each year. This has never been done in the past with the medical examiner. Yeah, so he is asking that he just be available to discuss the operations and findings of the office with the health officer or, um, elected official of the county.
So I just had a question on it, and, and a possible change of the language just a little bit. It, it, right now, it's changed to, when requested by the Delta County Health Officer or other designated county officials, the contractor shall be readily available to discuss the operations and findings of the medical examiner's office at a mutually convenient time. I'm suggesting it say, when requested by the Delta County Health Officer or other designated county officials, the contractor will provide a report. So basically, what it would still do is, if we needed the report, the report would be generated, because the rest of the language is all about what goes in the report. And I'm afraid that if we stick with this language, then it's just gonna be whatever is discussed in person, and it's not gonna be in writing. And so I would include that it's writing, that it's written. So right after it says, county officials, it would be comma, the contractor will provide a report. So just simple.
Do you want any action taken? Do you want that, the contract suspended until the next meeting?
So I would like to see the commission approve with this language in there. I can, I did one, however, we may-
And if he wants to come back with something else, he could come back with it, so, yeah.
Prove it as amended?
Approve it as amended, as, as, yeah, as amended with, the contractor will provide a report.
Oh, you're making a motion to-
Make a motion that we accept it with the amendment that after designated county officials, comma, it reads, the contractor will provide a report.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, let's see here, appointments to the UP eight-nine-one-one Board.
Currently, our designations are Director, Dispatch Director, and our Deputy Dispatch Directors. If you would like to remain in that, we just need a reappearance to the UP nine-one-one Board.
Yeah. Yes.
Move to reappearance?
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number twelve, Appointment to the UP Fair Board.
Um, I believe Commissioner Jensen-
Yeah, you did-
Currently, the-
Board assignments?
Yeah.
Currently, the representative was there, if you would like to remain.
So that one will stay as Commissioner Jensen. So I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number thirteen, Appointment to Q pad.
Is this the Q pad member at large?
Now, this is, uh, we are gonna be, uh, looks like-
Oh, okay.
John Dunholm?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to fill his position.
Is it just gonna be the Chair of the Planning Commission? Is that how that works?
John, John can no longer be the Chair of the Planning Commission, they're gonna appoint a new one, so-
Correct.
Is it usually the Chair of the Planning Commission? Is that what it-
It's not always the Chair of the Planning Commission that goes to this, it can be anyone.
Okay.
Uh, you will be, I don't know.
You have, you already had me on something with Q pad.
We'll have to wait for the reorganization, find out who's who.
Yeah.
Where did my list go? No, it's in here. You already had me on something with Q pad, so. I don't need more Q pad stuff.
It can be, it can be any member of the Planning Commission.
Any member of the Planning Commission?
I believe it can be any member, I don't know the-
Actually, on the sheet that's there, where it has as the member at large.
At large.
That would already, I think you already-
Yes, we already-
That's okay, that's what I was asking, is, is this the member at large? Okay, okay.
No, no, it's not the member at large, it's the-
The Planning Commission Representative.
Right. It's a representative, it doesn't say Chair, it just needs to be a representative.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Bergland as the Planning Commission Representative to the Q pad Regional Commission.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number fourteen. Request to donate sick leave.
We added a, in the, an employee approach administration, and we're requesting to donate sick time to a few employees. And our procedure is that the board commissioners approve this request and also open it up to other employees if they wish to donate.
I would be one hundred percent in agreement with that, absolutely.
And I'll support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody? Favor, motion pass. Number fifteen, Commissioner Travel Determination.
So our, the Ford Secretary brought forward a couple, or Commissioner's expense report, there was a couple questions. Um, in the past, we have not reimbursed employees, elected officials, for meals if it was provided through the training, the conference, and such. It's not, it's a past practice, it's not a policy. So that was one of our questions, if the commission wishes to reimburse the commissioner for that meal, and it was, there was a meal provided in the conference. And then also, a past practice we have is if, by any means, the individual that has registered to sign up for the training conference leaves early, or, um, does not attend the training, they are to reimburse the county for that cost. This individual did leave the conference early, which resulted in a loss of a two hundred and nine dollar deposit. Does the county wish, the commissioners wish to ask for reimbursement after that? You don't have, it's past practice, so.
I would say it would go to Personnel, because if you have to leave because your kid's sick, or you have a death in the family, I mean, I'm not gonna take your money just because of that. Like, but if you're just, you don't have a good reason, but I, I believe it's up to Personnel to take a look at that.
I believe the reason this person left was because they then went to a meeting the next day of the North Rail. Our, I believe that's what it was.
I think that's what, yeah. He had some meeting he had to go to.
There was a meeting in Rhineland there that he had to go to, I believe, the next day.
So still county business?
Yes, absolutely.
I agree with Patrick. I, I believe that, you know, these circumstances are, can be very one-off individual circumstances that would need to be dealt with on a one-on-one basis, or, or, what's the word I'm looking for?
Extenuating?
Anyways, what's the word I'm looking for?
Extenuating circumstances?
Case-by-case basis, thank you. Jeez. But the, but the other one around meals, I would say, you know, if the meals are provided, then you should be eating the meals. Or if you choose to go somewhere else and eat, then that's on your own, you know, that's your own choice, and you should, you should cover that.
And I did the same thing. I did not take the box lunch that they provide.
Yeah.
And Stacy knocked off my meal. I have no problem with that.
I, I, yeah.
Well, and don't we turn in receipts if we do a meal? So.
The receipt was returned.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to send this to Personnel for further review.
I'll support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay, let's see here. Number sixteen, Administration Public Health, Delta Menominee. And that was the one I was talking about, where, uh, on building, building the grounds where they were gonna be paying for their own repairs on two offices.
We talked about two.
What's that?
The appropriation we talked about in finance also.
Yes, yes.
So what happened during the current budget year, when we, Commissioner Jensen, Commissioner Melner, and I were discussing in finance, we reduced the appropriation, which is the two hundred and sixty-five thousand that we normally give them, due to the fact that of the custodial one position, they were, we're looking at developing a custodial one for the service center here. It's gonna be split between the Michigan Works and the Health Department, and it will help, also help our building and zoning offices and such. Um, so I, we had reduced the appropriation, however, they want us to still pass through that full appropriation and then bill them for the wages, their portion of the wages.
So the-
So they're requesting to increase it back.
So go back to, to what, uh, would it go back to two sixty-something, or is it, go back to?
It would go back to two sixty.
Two six, two sixty-four ninety-one or something?
Yes.
Okay, or just under that, I guess.
So we're just playing a shell game?
Yeah.
Motion to play the shell game.
Yeah, so they're, they're getting the money upfront and then reimbursing. Okay.
A motion?
Yeah. That's my motion, yeah. Motion to restore the appropriation.
Okay. Support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number seventeen is the Maintenance Health Department renovation. Number 17 is the Maintenance Health Department renovation, which we discussed in the, uh, building and grounds. I got mixed up, sorry. So, I need a motion to the maintenance, that, uh, Health Department's gonna provide their own, pay for their own renovation.
They're gonna use the assistance of our Maintenance Department also with plumbing work. Our Maintenance Director is a master plumber, so he's gonna be utilized over there. Cabinetry, putting up cabinetry, demolition and such.
And may, uh, he was telling us that these cabinets and everything else were still the cabinets that were first put in when this building was built back in the seventies.
So is there an expense related to this? Okay.
Besides our, our staff.
Staff time.
Staff time.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Number eight.
Actually, we were gonna.
Let's see. Oh, we're gonna.
General public comment.
We're gonna go to general public comment first. So, any general public comment? Any general public comment? Seeing none. We will move to closed session. And I need a motion.
You have the language here.
What's the language? Matt's got it.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for the discussion, or discussing negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement under OMI, Section 15, Point 268, Paragraph 8C. Support. Roll call.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Van Gogh, Holman.
Yes.
And Melner.
Yes.
So moved. And I'll support.
Any discussion?
How, how are we supposed to ratify a contract that we haven't seen?
Um, it was to the tentative agreement portion.
Okay.
And that will, the hard copy of that will come.
You got a motion? You got support? Any discussion? All in favor? Or do we need a roll call?
No.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Motion passed. We already had public comment. Uh, Commissioner's comment. Commissioner Johnson.
It's good to be back. Um, looking forward to getting a lot of stuff done. I've got a few things on my agenda, um, so I'll be sprinkling them, trying to sprinkle them through and, um, Commissioner Melner, you and I'll have conversations voted and hopefully get it on the agenda so we can move forward. But, yeah, glad to be back.
Commissioner Williams.
I have a few things here, and for folks who are listening, uh, through YouTube, uh, this may be, uh, you may enjoy this. There is a new subscribe link on the county calendar now. And so you can subscribe to the calendar, so when events are put onto the calendar or taken off of the calendar, you automatically are notified through your calendar. You cannot just click the link, you need to, you need to, um, open your own calendar system, whatever it is, and then you need to put that link into your calendar system to subscribe to it. But I think that this will help a lot of people who have had challenges with, uh, knowing when meetings are being held and when meetings are canceled and so forth. So, pretty excited about that. I also attended the city council meeting, and just so you know, they have openings for their Board of Equalization, Electric Advisory Committee and Zoning Board of Appeals. Also, Ford River Township has, uh, moved their board meetings from the second Monday of every meeting to the third Monday of every meeting, or every month now. So, third Monday of every meeting, Ford River Township, seven o'clock. Yeah, no, I look really forward to the work that we're gonna do. I'm very excited about it. You can now find my information, contact information on the website, Delta Counties, Delta County, um, Delta Count, Delta County.